I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to just start by saying I have definitely heard that we need a better system for comparing the current law to what has been revised. The issue I've had is that we, it has gone through revision committee, then workshops, then our attorneys, so there are many versions, but I will take the original and what has, is our current final and do a comparison, there'll be another public hearing next month, so we'll have a chance to see all the changes before passage or potential passage.
Someone said AI can do that for you.
Actually, it was Carol who referred to me and I completely lost track of it. A gentleman who says he can do that for us.
Yeah.
But I haven't followed up for, well, whatever reason, so I can do that.
Iron Trank's son can do it as well.
Oh, so we have possibility.
So I have someone, I think they can do it.
Excellent, so, yes, that would help a lot, I think.
Yeah, and save us money, I thank him. So I open the public hear, you don't have to read any legal notice, so I make a motion to open the public hearing, right? Yeah, open, I was looking in the wrong spot. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Anyone?
He discovered that, we're working on it.
Carol's about to throw a smoke grenade down there.
I will take this opportunity to say congratulations to Charlie who had successful surgery and is walking better because of it.
Thank you very much.
Can you do a dance for us or something?
Yeah.
I'll be doing an Irish jig afterwards for five dollars.
If Charlie dances, I'll sing.
Yeah. Not quite up to dancing yet, but.
Well, he's not up to singing, so that works both ways.
All right, but I will thank the good doctors down at HSS in New York City, they did a wonderful job. Arlene, you gonna come up to the mic at all? I mean, you want to just read a poem or something?
Well.
Of course.
Of course she does. 250 dash 23, macho mans and use of yards, D, number six. Maybe we should add.
All right, give us a minute.
Let us get there, okay.
250 dash 23, macho man and use of yards, D, as in David, number six.
Okay, bus shelters.
Bus passengers, playhouse, toolhouses, garden hoses, similar non-permanent structures now to exceed 50 square feet and located not close to 10 feet, blah blah, such non-permanent accessory structure shall now be included in the maximum number permitted by 250-22 accessory structures. Should we limit that to one, because what if you have like five of those?
I have no idea where she goes.
Yeah.
250-23, letter D, number six.
What if you have a lot of those small stuff?
250-23.
Letter D, number six.
The bottom of the page, it starts with bus passenger shelters.
Okay, I see it.
So, Arlene, they're not included in the maximum number of accessory structures, and Arlene's point is that means you could have an unlimited number, so should they be limited?
It does say elsewhere that you're limited to one.
No, that is point that we got a permit.
Right, but this is not, what Catherine is saying is that that one doesn't count. That's what this is about.
Can you just add one there too?
Except that it's about the setbacks, it's not about the number. This refers to setbacks. See, setbacks may be encroached upon for construction except, and then it lists the exceptions. It doesn't say one, two, three, four, whatever, it just lists the exception.
But it does, I totally, I absolutely agree with you, Elliot, but it's interesting that it does say such non-permanent accessory structure shall not be included in the maximum number permitted by 250-22. Why is that, if we're just talking about setbacks, why is it even? 250-23. I can't see that.
I'm sorry, Catherine, say that again?
So, if we're, if the section is about setbacks only and that those small items are not included in the setback, why does it reference the number included, the number permitted in 250-22? Like, should that even?
Good question.
It, I feel like it may muddy the waters. Well, this is confusing.
Yeah, I mean, it might be better to simply not, take that sentence out and not even refer to that, if you think that's the case.
What if you add only ones or two are permitted?
Well, that's, but that would be in a different section, so this section is only about setbacks, so if we wanted to limit the number of those small things, that's got to be somewhere else. 250-22 presumably.
So maybe just removing that sentence.
So that means you're allowed to have a couple in the setback?
No.
No.
It just means that that particular kind of structure is excluded. It doesn't refer to a number, it just refers to a type of structure.
All right, so you're going to remove the last sentence?
Exactly, that's what Catherine suggested.
What sentence are we looking, what last, right here?
Remove the one about such permanent.
Okay.
Will not be included because it confuses the.
What's that?
The last sentence.
Flip it over.
Do you concur?
You're on 22, you gotta be on 23.
You gotta come over, because if somebody's watching at home, they can't hear you.
But what sentence do you want out?
The last one.
The very, very last sentence.
Removing the last sentence would mean then that a playhouse under 50 square feet would not be included in the maximum number permitted, then it would be included in that maximum number permitted, so if somebody were to put up a bus shelter for their kids to wait for the bus, or a playhouse that was within the setback, then they would be allowed only two accessory structures on the entire rest of their property. So if you've got a 30-something acre lot and you've got a pool and a garage.
Except that these are the exceptions.
But the way that's worded, these are the exceptions for the setback.
Right.
Right, but if we take that last sentence out from D6, then they would be, they would count as accessory structures.
Why isn't that covered in 250-22?
In 250-22, which is both permitted and unpermitted accessory structures, by removing that last sentence now, these small buildings are counted as accessory structures, which means they're subject to 250-22, which is no more than three permitted ones and no more than one unpermitted one.
So.
So if the goal, and I think, I think, what I understand Arlene to be saying is that if the goal is to prevent somebody from having a garden shed and a little bus shelter and a playhouse and, you know, six buildings under 50 square feet, six feet from the road, then that, I think, should be included in the setback section.
But this doesn't preclude people from doing that. You're only allowed to have one under 50 feet.
Well, yes, you're only allowed one, right, except that the current wording for 250-23, number six, 250-22 does not apply, so you're allowed as many as you want.
Why does it not apply?
Well, it doesn't apply in reference to the setbacks, but why are we, we know that, but why is it being applied to every, all of it?
The way it's worded right now, such non-permanent, sorry, in 250-23, for setbacks, such non-permanent accessory structure shall not be included in the maximum number permitted by 250-22 accessory structures, so there's no limit imposed, there's no limit in 250-22 that would apply to this, the way it's worded.
But Elliot's saying there is a limit of one, where's that?
There, in 250-22B, one accessory structure without a permit, you're allowed one of those.
So maybe, what if it said 250-22B?
Right, but it says, but it says that it does not apply, so the limit of, the existing limit of one would not apply, the way it's currently worded. You could say 250-22A, and then it doesn't count against what would be deemed an actual structure that would be served by utility and greater than 150 square feet, or you could simply put a limit that you're only allowed a certain number to be within the setback.
So keep out that last sentence and say whatever number you choose.
I saw, I guess I'm just not seeing it, because 250-22B specifically says you're allowed to have one.
Right.
One of these small buildings not counting as part of the three.
Right.
So how does, I don't see how 23 contradicts that.
Because it says that 22 does not apply, so that limit of one does not apply.
Fine, so what if we remove that sentence?
If you remove the sentence, then a 50-square-foot or smaller toolhouse or bus shelter for your kid means you can't have detached garage, right? If you've reached your limit, so the trade-off there is a less than 50-foot square fielding, square foot building for an actual accessory structure that would be detached garage or a pool or a guest house or a machine shed, something like that.
Those would have.
So, I think the question is, what is the goal? If the goal is to minimize a bunch of stuff within a setback, then that's what I would recommend we address, and we can do that simply by adding a number to six.
But.
Well, Arlene's concerned was about having multiple things in the setback.
Right, it would start to look junky and you'd end up with a whole bunch of stuff that.
And these do not have permanent foundations.
Right. I guess I'm just not getting it, but, I mean, I don't see that taking that sentence out.
If you take the sentence out, it solves the issue of not having too many, that's absolutely correct, maybe that's where we're getting stuck, so if you take that sentence out, now there is a limit to the number, right? You can only have, you can only have one.
As stated in 250-22.
Right.
But that also limits other accessory.
Exactly, so if you wanted a shed somewhere else on your property, you couldn't have that shed, right? So.
But you can do that anyway. I mean, it doesn't have to.
More people would have to get a variance then, go for the planning board.
Well, if you're allowed one, you're allowed one, whether it's in the setback or not in the setback, you're still allowed one.
That is an option, right, so if you eliminate that sentence, then that's what happens, so you would have to choose between the bus shelter for the school bus or a gazebo that doesn't have electric, or a storage shed.
Or.
And that's, you could make that limit, that's just, that's the trade-off, if you do it that way.
Right, initially it was written to not include, Paul, do you have any feelings on this subject?
I don't know.
So, what, 250-23, D, six, Arlene pointed out that it appears that you could have as many of those small structures within the setback as you'd like, and I thought the last sentence made it confusing, but Jeff feels that if we leave this last sentence in, you lose the fact that it doesn't count towards your accessory structures.
These are not 250 square feet, so these are real small.
Right, yeah, so the idea is if you've got, you know, five of these types of buildings at the end of your driveway, they're all within the setback, you can have, you know, as many of them as you want there, the way that it's currently written, and so the suggestion was made, well, just get rid of that last sentence, and now the limits of 22 apply, which means you could only have one, which sets a limit, and that's fine, but if the limits in 22 apply, then it takes away from some other accessory structure you could have, so somebody's got to choose between the bus shelter for their kids or a pool, right, depending on how many accessory structures they have.
Right.
And that can be a fine choice, if the town wants a limit.
Right, no, but it needs to be a choice, a conscious choice.
These are like little, minor things, so it's like a policy choice, right?
Exactly, right, and that's entirely up to you, because you could just set a limit here in six and say, you know, this can be applied to no more than two such structures. Trying to not get too much in the minutia with things as well.
Too late.
But yeah. You failed, no one really had that one.
So, that would be my suggestion, is if you want to limit the number of small, under 50 square foot buildings that could be at the end of somebody's driveway, just put that limit here in six.
This may be applied to no more than.
250-22 does not apply, keep that in there, that's fine, then set a limit.
So you leave the sentence and just limit the two or.
Yeah, exactly. What do you think is attractive in the town of Cleveland?
I don't think, I don't think we ever had any discussion about the number. Well, zoning, it allows you to have one in the setback.
No.
Under 50.
Yeah, the one without a permit still can't be in the setback.
Right, but we never discussed limiting or establishing a number for these small structures.
Within the setback.
It was only the setback that was the issue. What if you want to put six of them on your property and none of them are in the setback?
Like, you could have like a tool.
Can you do that?
Play shed and all the stuff right there.
Because you're allowed to have one accessory structure with a maximum floor area of 144 square feet. Anything other than that, without a permit, anything other than that requires a permit, but it doesn't say that your three are going to include these little 50-foot things.
Right, so if you had a 50-foot thing and you put it somewhere outside the setback in your yard, you would only be allowed one, because 250-22 would apply, however, because of the way this is worded, it's in the setback, which makes it an exception to 23, and in that exception, it says that the limit doesn't apply anymore. So if you put it in the setback, you could have six of them, you put it in the, within this, the building envelope, you could have one.
We try to limit that.
Well, right, but then 250-22 does not say that specifically, all 250-22 says not more than three such accessory structures, blah blah blah, shall be permitted on a lot, okay, but it doesn't exclude or include any particular size, so what's to stop me from putting six tool sheds on my property, the way it's written now, assuming I don't interfere with the setback?
Yeah, because you can only have one. If you don't interfere with the setback, you're limited to one, under 22B.
But they're trying to, I mean, the other.
The irony is if you.
Where?
If it's in the setback, you will.
Yep, 12.
Well, yeah, so, which makes no sense, I mean, that's the opposite of what we're trying to do.
Right, but the way it's, the way it's worded right now, you could do that.
Okay, so what if, I'm just throwing this out there, a little devil's advocate, delete D6. Paul's laughing at me.
You can't, because we get the schoolhouse and the playhouse and all this stuff.
But that wouldn't be, it would no longer be the exception, it would, they would count towards the.
There's a lot of playhouses right in the setback.
Yes, yeah, it is an option to make it.
I don't think it's allowed, I mean, it's probably not a realistic.
And for most of these, what you're saying probably would work fine, except for the bus shelter, right, because if you're putting a playhouse right next to the road, you probably want to move it further.
Probably not going to do that.
Yeah.
So why don't we change it to two allowed?
So we have to put the sentence back, such non-permanent accessory structure shall not be included in the maximum number permitted by 250-22 accessory structures, period.
However.
However, or comma, however, you may only have, you only permitted to have two.
Two, I mean, you're talking a bus shelter for your kids and a tool shed, this is not excessive.
All right, so, because I have trouble writing fast, can someone send that to me in an email?
What's the upshot here?
We were going to, we're just doing this. Put that last sentence back in, so it will stay as written, but after accessory structures, you know, depending on your grammar, comma, with a limit of, or they may only be, no more than two, somehow you want to say that. And that's in the setback, correct? Right, that's within the setback, if they are, if they are not within the setback, then they are going to be held to 250-22, which has a hard limit in the number of structures.
Why?
If I'm following.
Why make an exception for the setback when we're actually trying not to? I don't see that, I'm missing something here.
Well, if you, if you want to put up a bus shelter for your kids to wait for the bus, it's going to be in the setback, right? If you want to put up a slide in a playset on the neighbor's property, is that really going to, you know, so I think that there are potentially reasons that you might allow.
Well, I think you can differentiate between a bus shelter for your kids to stay out of the rain and a tool shed.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, is that this list of examples, the bus shelter is really the only one that makes sense to me, that you're going to put at the end of your driveway.
Yeah.
Or within the setback, the rest of them should be in your yard, I mean, in my opinion, but Catherine, to your point, you could totally eliminate six, and then if somebody wanted to put a bus shelter, they would apply for an area variance.
Could do that.
Right? And in applying for that area variance, they could also request, you're looking at Ron.
No, I'm looking at Paul, who's like, mm.
They could also request that it not count to the number of accessory structures, right, so then they essentially achieve six through an area variance.
Right, so you have to get a variance.
And you just eliminate six altogether.
But it doesn't apply to your total number, so it doesn't mess up for you want to have a pool house.
Well, but it's always been a maximum of one, now all of a sudden, we're allowing two, where'd that come from?
No, so don't, you, Jeff's next suggestion was perhaps you could eliminate six altogether, and if you want to put, let's say, a bus shelter for the sake of discussion, you would have to get a variance.
An area variance.
An area variance.
So basically not, so the law would be written to not include any, and if you want to put something in.
The setback.
Yeah, basically, then what you're saying is building in the setback is building in the setback.
Exactly.
Right, and so if you're going to build in the setback, you need an area variance.
Okay.
So, I mean, the.
That sounds good.
The other, the other one through five makes sense, because they're things that are basically attached to a building, right, and so if you've got an overhang or three steps or whatever that goes into the setback, that's fine, and that's not likely to be right up to the road, I mean, some of the properties in town, they will be, but.
But not that many.
But not that many, and so six is specifically taking a structure and setting it potentially at the end of your driveway.
Right.
Which comes with certain risks, too.
So would that, would that, if you came and got a variance to put in a bus shelter at the foot of your driveway, obviously you're in the setback, does that count as one of your three accessory structures or not?
If you eliminate six, then it does, however, since you're applying for an area variance against the setback, as part of your application, you simply ask that it not account toward your total number.
That sounds reasonable.
As part of that.
That sounds reasonable.
That is very harsh. And you're going to be, the ZVA is going to be busy, everybody wants a bus shelter.
Well, I don't know, I know everybody, that might be overstating, right, but otherwise, what you have is a situation where all these little things are popping up along the road, you don't want that either.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
No, you're right.
It would be those things for garbage can, yeah, those.
Oh, yeah, little trash can shelters.
Trying to think of things that you would put along the road where you wouldn't want to have to make a difference.
Yeah, I think the simplest approach is to just put a limit on it.
I think so, too.
So go back to the original, leave the last sentence in and, comma, and somehow say, no more than two.
Structures.
Yeah.
No more than two.
Yeah, no more than two.
All right.
12.
All right. So we have five minutes, anyone else on zoning revision?
Going once, going twice.
Yeah.
Okay, kind of miss not having right here.
But maybe Ron or Paul could help me, there's this intersection of the code that seriously it says nothing in the setback allows, not even fence or ladder or anything. I just can't remember the code, right, right? There isn't that, we always talk about that in the ZVA, that you can't store anything, not even fence, yeah, no storage in the setback, even ladder or anything, so I think that's going to complicate.
Bradley.
Arlene, what you're talking about is 250-23C, setbacks as required herein shall not be used for the storage of merchandise, equipment, building materials, junk, vehicles, vehicle parts, or any other material or for signs, except as otherwise specifically permitted herein. So the issue there is some of the definitions of some of those things, how does one define junk? Junk is similar to noise, it is one person's thing, also, any other material, building materials, a ladder, a ladder is a piece of equipment, and equipment is part of this list, so it becomes really difficult what can and can't be, to discern what can and can't be.
You have to interpret that sentence, yeah.
And again, the question is, what is the goal? And if the goal is to not have the setbacks filled with things that are potentially hazardous, right, to health or safety, or, you know, it's junky and it's garbage and it's wherever else, so, but that list makes it mean, to Arlene's point, you couldn't put a ladder.
What if you were to simply say setbacks as required herein shall not be used for storage, except as otherwise specifically permitted, or something like that, and leave out the examples, if you think the examples are restrictive, then just leave out the examples.
Deleting things.
Then you're still stuck with this idea that you can't put a ladder in your setback.
Well, you can't, based on this, you can't.
You can't store it there.
You can't store it there, right.
So a lot of things.
So, yeah.
Well, it doesn't mean they can, it just means they do. Well, I'm simply saying that if you're concerned that this list is problematic, the easiest thing to do is simply not have a list, and just have a general statement saying, no storage in setback.
That certainly would make it easier to say, yes, actually, you do have something in your setback, right? As opposed to saying, you've got junk in your setback, and somebody's saying, well, no, I sit out in that chair and have my coffee in the morning, even though it's broken, you know?
Well, that's certainly true, so if you want that level of flexibility, it would help.
I don't think it's too.
Yeah, I think what was added in this one, because I don't recognize it from the current code, is this, the last sentence, a driveway setback, including the apron, shall be a minimum of 10 feet from any property line, I don't understand how that works, because your driveway apron by default touches your property line.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said, Jeff.
The last sentence of 250-23C, he believes is in addition, and it, how does that work? Driveway setback excluding the apron shall be a minimum.
Oh, excluding the apron, sorry.
Yeah, so what it's saying is on your.
It's adding a setback for the length of the driveway, which we don't currently have, yes, yeah, so, yeah, that's fine, yep, thank you, thanks, so, yeah, if you want to eliminate all of the examples.
So not used for storage, eliminate, except as otherwise.
No, no, eliminate all the, eliminate merchandise, equipment.
So we go to storage and then delete until, except as otherwise specifically permitted herein.
You've got it.
All right. All right.
Oh, but I also should point out that most driveways are in the setback, and everybody parks the car in the driveway.
So at 6:30? Can you read? Can you read this?
Okay, on behalf of Supervisor Witten, I'll move that we keep the public hearing open until 6 o'clock, or 6:00 PM on Tuesday, June 10th, 2025, where the town board will hear public comments on Articles 7, 8, and 9 of the revised zoning law. We have a second.
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 Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I make a motion to adjourn the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. I am now going to open the regular meeting. We did the pledge. Can you approve minutes?
Okay. Move that we approve the minutes from the April 8th, 2025, public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I guess.
And I will move that we approve the minutes from the April 8th, 2025, regular town board meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries. And finally, that we approve the minutes from the April 17th, 2025, special town board meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
So we are on the agenda. It says a presentation by Art Pritchard for the bench that's in front. He isn't here right now, so we're gonna move on, and when he shows up, we'll do that. So is there anyone who would like to speak on things on the agenda? No? Alright. So we are moving on to Supervisor's comments. I will ask Elliot to read for me.
Okay, Supervisor's, you're welcome. Supervisor's comments, Clinton Town Offices. Highway Department, Justice Court Office and Court will be closed for Memorial Day on Monday, May 26. The library will be, will be closed on that day as well. Starting on April 18th, the settlement checks for those who are eligible for Columbia Utilities Settlement were mailed. Each check was about $50. Those who received checks will have 90 days to cash them before the checks are void. For more information, please read the FAQs on the town website, www.townofclinton.com. Thirdly, the Town of Clinton has partnered with Hudson River Housing to take part in the new New York State Plus One ADU program. This is a full-service program to support, to support low and middle-income, single-family homeowner occupants who wish to build a new accessory dwelling unit on their property, or improve an existing ADU that needs to be brought into compliance with local and state requirements. For information about this program, visit the New York State Homes and Community Renewal website. Duchess County is hosting a free rabies vaccination clinic on Saturday, May 31st, at the Hudson Valley Animal Rescue and Sanctuary located at 9 Barnes Drive in Poughkeepsie. For more information and to register, please visit H V A R S dot com. And next, next, the May is Mental Health Awareness Month. The purpose of this program is to raise awareness and educate the public about mental illness, the realities of living with these conditions, and strategies for attaining mental health and wellness. Additionally, Mental Health Awareness Month strives to reduce the stigma that surrounds mental illness. Part of this effort includes lining up the tree in front of our town campus green. This is the international color of mental health awareness, representing optimism, hope, and growth. Also, tonight, there will be a presentation by members of the local Masonic Lodge, who have donated a bench to the town honoring, honoring those who suffer from mental health-related problems. East Clinton Fire Department is holding an informational session detailing its need for a new facility. This presentation will take place on Wednesday, May 21st, at 7:00, 7:00 PM, at the East Clinton Firehouse, located at 9 Firehouse Lane in Clinton Corners. And lastly, the West Clinton Fire Department will hold a dedication ceremony at Station 2, which is over on Fiddler Bridge Road, so that the community can see the improvements made during recent renovation. The open house will take place on May 17th, which is this coming Saturday, from 11 to 2, 11 to 1, rather. Station 2 is located at Long Pond Road in Schultzville.
Thank you.
I would like to add just a couple of comments in the, as Deputy Supervisor. Every year around this time, the coding folks have asked for nominations for just illustrious municipal clerks working for various towns, and I'm pleased to say that this year, we have two who have been nominated. We have Carol Mackin, who was our illustrious town clerk, sitting right over there. And we have Kathy Gallinger, who is our illustrious, what is she, assistant to the town supervisor, who is not here tonight, but she was also nominated and had been accepted into this distinguished group. So I just want to mention that as a way of giving credit where it's due, and letting folks know that we do have these very capable and committed employees who really, to a great extent, keep the town going.
Thank you.
You laugh.
Moving on to reports, Councilperson Missel.
Okay. The CAC meets tomorrow in the Masonic Hall at 5:30. All are welcome. I know they're going to participate in the book sale and community, the library book sale and Community Day coming up, so we'll watch for them. They often bring out the maps, the new NRA maps, maps with them, and they're pretty neat to look at, so visit their tables at those events. Planning Board, in April, they had no, that last meeting in April, they didn't have a meeting. In May, their first meeting, they looked at an area variance for home occupation, soil erosion permit, a ground-mounted solar permit, and Omega's campground renewal. And the ZBA April meeting was canceled.
Thank you. Charlie?
Okay, thank you. Next recreation meeting, June 30th here, 7:00 PM. There's no meeting in May. Recent activities, the second family movie night and monthly chess night have been well-attended, and I thank the people running them for doing a fine job. The pavilion at Fran Mark is fully rented for all weekends in June and all Saturdays in July. Thank you. Good job. Upcoming events, May Narcon Training Session taught by Sue DeHaan, East Clinton Fire Department, May 15th, 7:00 PM, Fran Mark Park. Hiking Committee, hiking on Saturday, May 17th. All of this information is on the website, by the way. Three versus three basketball held in May, on May 24th. They're looking for girl and boy teams in grade seven and up. They're also still accepting vendors for the second annual community yard sale to be held at Fran Mark Park on May 24th. Swimming at Fran Mark Park will open Memorial Day. I thank the recreation people for doing a fine job, and all of this information is on the town website. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie, Councilperson Osvids.
The library report. The Friends of the Library will be holding the spring book and plant sale this weekend, May 16th to 19th. The hours are Friday, 12 to 5, which is the book sale only. Saturday, 9 to 3, which is the book sale and plant sale. And Sunday, 11 to 3, is bag day, where shoppers can fill a bag for just $5. Prices start at $1, and the books span all genres and topics. The library expresses their appreciation to the town for the use of town hall for this event. Because of the book sale, the following programs are canceled for this week only. Mahjong chair yoga, zumba, and all-level yoga. The 2025 Annual Report to the Community will be available to the public this week. The report will be posted on the library's website, and hard copies will be available in the library and town hall. The library will be closed on Monday, May 26th, in observance, observance of Memorial Day. Both the library and Friends of the Library will have tables at Community Day on Saturday, June 7th. Be sure to stop by to find out about the summer reading program, garden tour, and more. The Highway Department, the month of April had the highway crew cleaning roads on two different occasions, both for a late-season snow event, and then for tree damage due to wind and rain. Guide rail installation was done on Jamison Hill Road, Schoolhouse Road, and Shabrow Lane. Culvert pipe improvements were made on East Cooking Ham Drive, Rusky Lane, and Reinder's Road using the excavator. Replacement delineators were also installed. Road sweeping has begun. The crew put the broom attachment onto the JCB and the annual town wide road cleanup, and began the annual wide road cleanup. Interdepartmental aid was given to the cemetery department. The highway crew constructed a road and a parking pad in the rear lot, in addition to fixing the drainage problem in the lower lot. Equipment maintenance was done on the plows, wings, and sanders, as they were taken off and stored till next season. Work permit was, one work permit was assigned this month. That's it.
Thank you.
Do you want maintenance?
Yeah, yeah.
In that, the kitchen is coming along, the cabinets are in, thanks to Art Pritchard. They look great. And the roof on the Highway Department has been taken care of. Thank you again, Dow, for your contribution to that job.
Thank you.
Okay.
Alright. Councilperson Werner?
Okay, just a couple of things here. The, a report from the Scenic Roads Committee. In terms of the roadside cleanup project that was held on April 26th, there was a large response from the community this year. Advertising was started earlier than in the past, and was announced on local calendars. Volunteers arrived at 9:00 for road assignments, and others chose-
Turn in your mic.
Others chose their roads to clean up. A few volunteers worked very hard during the week, and others turned out on a rainy, what turned out to be a rainy Saturday. The committee would like to thank everyone who participated in the 2025 Town of Clinton roadside cleanup, and a big thank you to those who continually pick up litter all year round. Quick list of those who signed up to participate in this year's cleanup, Barbara Mansell and Joyce Thomaselli, E.V. Morrow, Marcifah Anderson, Matthew Hahn, and children, Friends of Clinton, Ray Rivard, Glenn Herschon, I Enshrank, and Daniel Bertolozzi. Thanks to everybody for that. And in terms of the building, Building Department, less activity this month than last. Eight building permits were issued during the month of April, as opposed to 14 in the previous month. Five CCs and COs were issued, as opposed to 17. Three title searches, as opposed to eight. And total cost of construction was a little under $60,000, whereas in the month of April, it was a little over $1 million. So that's a significant difference. So that'll do it.
Thank you. I'm told Councilperson Dykes has something to add.
Yeah, Hometown Heroes. Our first round is completed. All of the banners are up. I'm very proud of them. You see them along Santa Road here in Salt Point Turnpike. Our second round is underway. I believe we have three applications.
Five today.
Five today, okay, which means we have enough to go forward to the printer. If you have any veterans in your family you wish your honor, go to the town website, Hometown Heroes, all the, all of the information is there. We look forward to your participation. Thank you.
Thank you. Old business. The item is Charlie.
Be again. Be resolved, apparently, well, be resolved that the town board rejects all bids submitted for the staining of the Fran Mark Park due to the bid proposals exceeding the budgeted amounts.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussions? I'll just say, we have done this three times, and now a new plan is being worked out. So we're gonna reject these bids and move on. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. New business. Elliot?
Sure, I will move, on behalf of the town supervisor, we approve the following resolution. Be it resolved, Town Board approves Resolution Number 20 of 2025, approving the revised and amended deed agreement of covenants and restrictions and stipulation of settlement with the Omega Institute for Holistic Studies Incorporated. Is there a second?
Second.
In discussion, I'll just say, we are under a agreement with Omega from 1991, and this would basically bring them into compliance with Chapter 218 of our zoning trailers and, no, Chapter 218, trailers and trailer parks. This resolution dissolves the 91 agreement and replaces it with a new one. It's, alright, so this is for the campground, not the institute. Thank you, Jeff. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I have a problem with 218-7.
What is it?
The parties acknowledge the special circumstance of the camping trailer camp being managed by Omega. The parties agree that a manager that resides on the premises shall not be required. I totally disagree with that.
So a manager residing there, living there.
It shall not be required.
Yeah, but it doesn't mean the manager wouldn't be there. They wouldn't live there. Reside there.
So this is, you have to, if I may, so the Long Pond Campground is a separate entity that we're writing this agreement for, which is part of Omega.
Mm-hmm.
So Omega will still oversee it, and there will be a manager of Omega, which is on the, who will be on the premises. However, you wouldn't be able to say that they are a manager of the Long Pond Campground.
If there's a fire at the Long Pond Campground, and a neighbor spots it, who are they gonna call?
Omega. The main number. No, I, I, I hear you. It's a valid point, but I, I think it's covered, because they do have staff.
It's not, it's not an independent trailer park. It's owned by, it's an Omega trailer park.
And does the, is there someone at Omega who resides there?
Staff?
All of their staff.
Yes, they all live there.
You're on their staff.
It's only housing staff.
It's only the campground, alright.
I also think it's important to point out that there is no change in what's going on at Omega and this Long Pond Campground. This is just simply making the paperwork better.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number two.
Okay, so following up on previous comments in the supervisor's report, we'd like to move the town board approves the following Resolution Number 21 of 2025, proclaiming May as Mental Health Awareness Month. May as Mental Health Awareness Month. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Number three?
And I'll move the town board approves the following Resolution Number 22 of 2025, supporting EMS Week on May 18th. Is there a second?
Second.
In discussion, I, because it wasn't in my comments, I would say EMS is of adult service to our community, and the volunteers have thousands of hours of training at their expense to enhance their skills. So recognizing their value and accomplishments means a lot to us. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Elliot?
And a resolution to appoint seasonal workers, Resolution Number 23 of 2025, appointing seasonal workers. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All aye?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Yes. And can you read this?
Sure, okay. And lastly, for new business, you're approve the filming of, improve filming insurance and indemnification agreement. Town board, move that the town board approves the following resolution, the filming insurance and indemnification agreement between the Town of Clinton and the film company slash producer for the production on Schultzville Road, conditional on their signature. Thereafter, the town supervisor is authorized, empowered, and directed to sign the agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
So in discussion, this is sort, as of yesterday, this is sort of a safety thing. It doesn't look like we'll need this agreement. I would only sign it if they do first. It's put us on their insurance, because originally, they were asking us to pay for some sheriffs for safety, but the town does not have a contract with the sheriff. So now they're using state police, and they would pay them themselves directly. So it doesn't look like we need to be added to their insurance, but just in case, we meet once a month. So we're hopefully passing this. Any other discussion?
When will this take place? Do we have a date?
I think it starts on 18th or 20th.
They're gonna place the lights, the 28th through the early June, I think. And they did give us dates. It's in the email thread about it.
Well, I know, because the cones are, the cones are out. When I drove up along Schultzville Road.
Well, then, yeah, and they are not closing the road, but there will be, they may, they may stop traffic for a few minutes, so.
And anyone nearby will get things in their mailbox telling them when it's gonna happen. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. Other items? Resignations?
None.
None?
Oh, none. All right. Catherine?
Be resolved that the town board approves the May General Fund Warrant, vouchers numbered 165 through 234 totaling $98,570.25. And the May Highway Fund Warrant, vouchers numbered 132 through 168 totaling $131,182.47. And the May Capital Fund Warrant, vouchers numbered six and seven totaling $392.50. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Elliot?
Motion to move funds. Town board approves Resolution Number 24 of 2025, a motion to move funds at the May 13th, 2025 town board meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Sorry.
It's okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Motion carried.
Okay, and the supervisor's report, that we accept the supervisor's report or approve rather dated April 2025. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Any other items? All right. Public discussion, I make a motion to open the floor to public discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discuss, uh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Anyone who would like to speak can use the microphone and state your name. And you have about three minutes, but I'm not tough on that. Anyone?
Well, my name is Michael Fastman. I live on Lake Drive, and I'm gonna address the moratorium for proposals and applications that you're working on, and specifically regarding Six Cents. And should, the moratorium should include all proposed applications, including for pending applications. The area is really, you know, the IH group, G group makes, makes us want to think that we don't care anymore, we're not involved, we're very involved, and then you should consider this, all pending applications in your moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Lynn Maselli. I'm on Pumpkin Lane. I'm not shy about getting up. I've been up here before. I just would like to ask the town board to see if they could look at maybe doing something in terms of the assessments. Put it on the town agenda and have some serious discussions about how you can curb the assessments in this town. I think that over the last five years, granted, everybody's assessments have gone up, okay? But I think every year, your assessment going up 5,000 or 50,000 is a little excessive, and I don't understand why all the, most of the properties in this town have to be coded as 210 residential. Like, I, I think it's time that the board put it on an agenda and have some serious discussions about coming up with some alternative ways to curb the assessments. Some of the states are offering inflation exemptions. Some of the states are doing very creative things. If you look at Montana in terms of how they've balanced out their assessments with the different types of properties that they have. But I just, I don't know. I think you're gonna find that, you know, the 12-month people that live here all year round are paying a price. And there comes a point where they can't pay the price anymore. They're gonna leave. And they're being forced out. And I, you know, that's, that's one issue. I would just like to see the board and put it on the agenda and have some serious discussions about how they can curb it. And then the other, second thing I'd like to mention, too, is that senior exemption that Mike approved for anybody who's over 65. I would encourage anybody who is over 65 to apply for that, whether they think they apply, are eligible or not. Let the assessor make that determination, because they changed the rules and they don't tell everybody. They've actually changed how they calculate it now, so that, that 50,000, 50% deduction in your assessment is kind of nullified by adding in the non-taxable social security again. And these things happen, and people don't realize it, and I would just encourage anybody who's over 65, apply for it, fill the application out, let them make the determination. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nick Sardota. I would also like to speak to the moratorium regarding the Six Cents project. It's something that needs to be done. I think we can all agree that the law itself seems very problematic. It opens up a lot of loopholes, and a company like IHG is just gonna continue to take advantage. I think a moratorium is really needed. That also applies to pending applications. I think this is something that should be taken into consideration. IHG is kind of just hoping that people are gonna forget. It's gonna get swept under the rug, and then they can just continue on whatever they want. We're not gonna forget. We would like to see something done about the problematic law. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
I forgot something, and I apologize. I don't know if people are aware, but they're looking to put in a $6 million firehouse in East Clinton, okay? If you are in the East Clinton Fire Department, June 3rd, I believe, is the vote over at the Community Church on Salt Point Turnpike across from where Stewart's is. So it's just public information. I'd like to let the public know it's June 3rd for that vote, if you're interested in voting on it. Thank you.
And in case you missed it, in Mike's supervisor's comments, on the 21st of May, at that firehouse in the Hamlet of Clinton Corners, there's an informational session, I believe it's at 7:00. So there, you can find out...
7:00 PM.
You can find out all about it, what their plans are, and, and how they're funding it and everything.
There's also, the one on Saturday is now on, is on YouTube, I believe.
It's on our website.
It's on the town website. There was a workshop last Saturday.
Here.
Under Services. If you go to townofclinton.com, click on Services, and you'll see the link to, and it'll be the same presentation at both locations.
So anybody who's interested can look on the, excuse me, look on the web and see what happened on Saturday.
All right. Well, thank you. Anyone else? Come once, all right.
Hi, everyone. I'm Lisa Metcalf. Nine Partners Road, also president of Friends of Clinton. Oof, I don't know which glasses I'm using. Anyway, we are coming up less than a month of Community Day, which is June 7th, same location at the Historical Society and the Fire Department and the Cemetery, who've all been so generous over all the years to share their property. We are still looking for volunteers for our welcome booth, if anybody would be interested in volunteering an hour of their, of their time that day. I have a sign-up sheet with me. I've also brought some vendor forms, just in case anybody was having trouble with the digital vendor form. I have them here if you want to just handwrite them out. We'll also, they'll also be at the post office if you need them. And our next meeting is this Thursday at the East Clinton Firehouse from 6:00 to 7:00. It may run a little bit longer, just because we're getting closer to the date. But, and everyone in the town is invited. It is, in fact, a community event. And I've also brought with me just a little reminder about who Friends of Clinton is. We are a group of local people, Nine Partners, Shablow, Bowman's Glen. And I'll just repeat our mission really quickly. Friends of Clinton is a community-based, nonprofit. We are a 509A2, which the state of New York has given us that, as we are, how do they put it? I guess, community-oriented. And we are focused on creating events and community impact within our, our town. Inspired by the local slogan created by Paul Thomas, "Clinton Not Rhinebeck since 1786," our events will take place throughout the year, bringing a community together, increasing awareness and commerce to our local businesses, and having a lot of fun right here at home. We also have our other events beyond Community Day attached here, so I'll leave this out for everyone to take. And of course, we would love community participa, uh, participation with the, with, on committees or just volunteering for an event. So we've got our email address to reach out. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else? Don't be shy. All right. I'll make a motion to return to the regular order of business. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I, I just wanna say, when it comes to the senior exemption, Lynn, I think it was said that I approved it. While I'd like to take credit for protecting seniors from, and giving them a tax exemption, that law passed, the exemption passed by this town board unanimously, not just me. So I make a motion to adjourn the town meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.